Okay, great. We'll go ahead and get started. Okay. I'm gonna have to do this from memory because normally I have the sheet in front of me, but I don't have the working agenda tonight. So, no, that's fine, it's fine. Regular notice of the Leonian Board of Education was provided through the following methods: distribution of notice to the record, notice at Annecy Scott Elementary School, Leonian Middle School, Leonian High School, the community, the district website, sent out via remind, the weekly update, and all over social media. So, the regular meeting of the Leonian Board of Education was called to order on June 8th, 2021 at 7:32 PM via Zoom webinar. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. One second. Whoops, sorry. I'll share the screen in a second. Okay, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Great. Wait one second. One second. All right. We'll start off with... Oh, we'll go right to public comment. So if there is public comment on any agenda items...
Roll call.
I'm sorry. Yes, roll call. This meeting can be a bit of a challenge. I don't have it, but Rashawn, I just opened up your document that you sent, so thank you. I appreciate that. I'll probably read off this. So, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese.
Present.
Ms. Choi.
Present.
Mrs. DeJesus. Yeah, okay. Mr. Lee.
Present.
Mrs. Melman.
Present.
Mr. Park.
Present.
Mrs. Rackow.
Present.
Mrs. Thompson.
Present.
Mrs. Wilds.
Present.
Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Also present this evening, we have Dr. Ed Bertolini, myself, Rashawn Hassan, School Business Administrator, Vic LaPera, our General Counsel and Board Attorney. I believe I see Dr. Zanti Karamanos with us this evening. In addition to our two student representatives, Mr. Christopher Morello and Mr. Eli Kinnler. So, injure roll call, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. All right, now we'll move to public comments, concerns, questions, or praise on agenda items. We also have a second public comment portion of the meeting for non-agenda items. So, for the first public comment, this one, please just do it agenda items only. Is there a motion to take us into public comment? Somebody? Second, Maria. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please just use the raise your hand function, and we will call on you. Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to take us back to the regular portion of the meeting? Is there a second? Second again, Maria. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. We're now in the board comment portion of the meeting, and student representative comments. So, the first thing I wanted to mention is that Chris Morello, this is his last meeting with us, and Chris is the first student representative to serve a full, I guess, that would be the full term, right? Like, two terms, two years, as a student representative. So, Chris, got your little certificate. We'll give it to you tomorrow. Congratulations on being the first student representative to complete two terms. Congratulations. Anything you'd like to say? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Nah, it's all right. I was gonna say something anyway. I would just like to thank Bryce and the board as a whole for being so welcoming, making me feel comfortable from the first meeting to all the way now, two years later. I'm sorry that, like, it's unfortunate that the last year of meetings had to be done virtually. I really liked interacting with you guys. Talking to adults is pretty fun. But I'm just grateful for the opportunity you guys provided. I think I've learned so much. I've accomplished a lot. And I'm excited to see what Eli and future student representatives do later.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations again. All right. Are there other board comments? Anybody have a board comment?
Bryce, if I can, just under Finance, item 60812A-21. Just wanted to clarify, that's $43,000, 3.3 ounce hand sanitizer containers.
Yeah.
Wanted to particularly call that out, and I mean, Eddie, obviously, the school's budgets are always tight. So, you know, any kind of donations ever received, just like to call that out and thank Sun Young and GiveChances.org. Thank you.
$43,000, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's a lot of hand sanitizer. Isaac, thank you. Thank you, Sun Young. Thank you, the Give Chances organization. And once this is approved, I was gonna send Sun Young a letter thanking her and the organization for this donation. This is very generous, and $43,000, like, when Ed said $43,000, I was like, what? Really wonderful. Mary, yeah?
Yeah, I want to thank Bryce for putting together the resolution for the military observance, having military service people in my family history, my grandfather, my father, my uncle, my mother's father, now my son, who will be heading off to the Army in two years. I think it's really important to recognize the service, the dedication, everything that all of these people go through, you know, from training and serving, you know, being there, you know, in person. It's really, it's really great to recognize that, and I appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that as well. Maria?
Yep, so I actually also, like, Mary wanted to thank you for putting together that resolution. My husband served eight and a half years flying in the Navy, so we are a military family, and we're very proud of that. And I think not enough people serve, right? Not enough people do their civic duty, unfortunately, in any capacity, right? Whether it's the military, public service, volunteering, anything. And so, anything we can do to recognize and encourage that, and even potentially highlight what incredible career opportunity that is, the kind of camaraderie that it builds, the kind of leadership skills that it builds, I'm completely in favor of that. And then, on an absolutely unrelated note, I wanted to thank the wonderful kindergarten teachers and the ACS administration for putting together a really moving, moving up ceremony that, you know, I just attended this week. It was great. It was sweltering, hot, but, you know, I just so enjoyed it, and having some, that little semblance of normalcy and being able to watch your kindergartner, you know, kind of graduate and move up to first grade, just, you know, made me so hopeful that we're really close to kind of going back to normal and just, like, letting our kids be kids and not constantly worrying, at least about that one thing, and just worrying about the regular things.
Absolutely. I imagine it was very warm.
It was 90.
Kim?
At 9.
Kind of to piggyback on what Maria said, the pre-K had their moving up ceremony on Friday, and I just wanted to thank the admin, Dr. Bertolini, everyone who supported that ceremony, and they actually had to pivot at the last minute and move it indoors, and everyone did a great job. It was safe. The kids had a great time, and maybe we can post the video. It just, what Maria said, it felt normal, and it felt really great to be back to a semblance of what it could be in the future.
Norine, I believe you had a comment.
Just on the whole end-of-year ceremonial type comments. So, I wanted to thank everyone who was involved with organizing the Leonian High School prom. I went to the pre-prom on Saturday night, and it was beautiful, the weather, the location in Edgewater. I know, like, Mr. Calendar, Mr. Sernatinger, all the senior advisors, all the Edgewater officials, the Edgewater rec. I mean, there were just a ton of people there, just making sure everything was set up, and it looked absolutely beautiful. So, I know a lot of hard work went into it, and I'm sure I forgot someone, but everyone who was involved did a great job. And our student reps cleaned up really nice, too, so just add that. Eli and Chris were both there.
I'm sure it was hot then as well. But, yes, no, I completely agree with you, Norine. From the Edgewater DPW to all the administrators, I thank you. Absolutely. Dom, yeah?
It's like, thank you moments. I can resist. I want to give a kudos to ACS Home and School Association. You know, it has been a tremendous effort by these moms to celebrate rising fifth and sixth graders, I mean, currently, fourth and fifth graders leaving ACS this year, in spite of the COVID challenge, which we are all looking forward to, the ice cream truck and everything. It was really, there are so many moms just taking extra steps to make this year memorable as possible for the kids. And mine is, you know, one of the ones benefiting from it, so I am very grateful, and thank you for the hard work.
All right, any other board comments? So far, I'm liking board comments. Isaac, yeah, you're gonna continue with it.
Okay, well, I thank everybody, and especially, like, all the teachers. And then, well, you happen to be my son in ACS, so especially all the, like, teachers in ACS. And then, I've seen that all the teachers that, you know, they're teaching during the pandemics and online, the classes, the teachers, the, you know, the old, the effort, and then how much they try. It was really, really appreciated. Thanks to all the teachers and as well as all the administrator during this pandemic time. Thank you very much.
Lovely board meeting so far. I have to say, I've seen a lot of bad ones, but this is a great one so far. I shouldn't speak too soon. Still a long board meeting, but okay. Any other board comments? All right, so, you know, we can move right along. Oh, yeah, students, you guys have comments. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. Chris or Eli? Well, I can't see Eli. Where's Eli? Oh, there he is.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, great. Let's see. Approval of consent agenda items. I'm looking here. I think the only one that's not consent agenda, other than, like, personnel items, is the finance item, finance and the resolution. That's it. So, other than that, all the items that are consent agenda items should be marked with an asterisk. Is there a motion on the consent agenda items?
Motion?
Motion, Maria. Is there a second? Second, Norine? Rashawn, roll call, please. I'm used to saying, like, discussion, but if it's consented.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Mrs. DeJesus?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Rackow?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilds?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
All right. The eyes have it. Motion's been approved.
Okay, great. Next, we'll move on to our reports. Dr. Bertolini, you're first. I'm just gonna move this to here, so if you can hear me.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Thank you, Bryce. Just a couple of items. First of all, Mr. Sacco has sent the information out to the parents and the students. There'll be three assemblies starting on Wednesday, starting tomorrow. Tomorrow for the rising sixth graders. It'll be during the school day for the students, but it'll be the counselors and administrators talking to our rising sixth graders, current fifth grader at ACS. And then, on Friday, the fourth graders at ACS will get the same type of orientation for their move up to the middle school. And then, on Monday, the 14th, the sixth graders at EVG will be getting the orientation from both the Sacco and Mrs. King and the counselors. And they'll answer a lot of the questions that the students may have, especially the, well, I guess, all three grade levels, because they're all going to middle school for the first time. Staffing, you'll see on the agenda site, there's a lot of staffing change, a lot of additions. This is the time of year where we hire staff. I do want to thank our administrative team for spending a lot of time interviewing staff members for the new positions, and there's a good number on here. And as you see in the new business, we've added some just recently. But we'd like to be as fully staffed as possible by the end of June, so we can move into the school year and just plan for the school year. And then, finally, two years ago, we recognized Mrs. Jean Freddie. We named, if you remember, we named the Marketing and Business Leadership Academy, the MBLA, after Mrs. Jean Freddie. Certainly, Eli, as a member of the MBLA, knows it's the Rowena Jean Freddie Marketing Business Leadership Academy, for her years bringing the program to the great level that it reached when Rowena was here. And tonight, we're gonna honor another staff member, another Leonian District staff member, who has been in the district for 27 years. She is respected throughout Annecy Scott School by the staff, by the parents, and by the students. She's well-loved, and as many of you know that she's retiring this year. She's respected for her concerns, her help, her assistance to students, parents, and staff. She's always willing to answer a phone call, help out, and also, she's been a collaborative leader this year as part of the medical subcommittee. So, in recognition of Linda's 27 years at Annecy Scott and all the time and love she's put into the school, from now on and forever, the Annecy Scott Nurses' Office will be now known as the Linda Bernard Nurses' Office at Annecy Scott. So, congratulations. She does not know this is happening, and I don't think she's on, but she will be angry at me for naming it after her, but I don't care. We're gonna honor her and give her her recognition. That's well deserved.
You're gonna take the recognition. You're gonna like it. All right, thank you very much, Dr. Bertolini. Next, we'll move on to, there's no hip reports, right?
No, not this time.
Rashawn, Business Administrator report.
No, no report this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, let me just recap this computer up here. Better angle. Off of Dr. Bertolini's desk.
Yes.
All right, next, we'll move along to committee reports. Dr. Bertolini, the first one is on COVID-19 reentry update.
Yeah, Zanti. Zanti's leading the restart plan for September. We have the three schools working on their individual plans. And at the June, prior to the June 22nd meeting, in a couple of updates, we'll have the plan ready. But the bottom line is, we're coming back to school full-time, regular after-school activities, enrichment program at ACS, everything that we used to have before the pandemic started, we are gonna continue. The only fly in a possible ointment would be Governor Murphy saying something else, but at this point, he's moving ahead strongly and in person. Zanti, I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, that's pretty much it. We do have some additional after-school programs that we wouldn't normally have coming up for next year to support the learning loss that we, that has occurred over the past year. So, you know, more information on those programs will be coming out once we get the grants approved.
Yeah, that was a question actually during our office hours, was about learning loss and the catch-up curriculum and things like that, so.
Yeah, we are planning some things during the summer, but most of the things will be after, when school starts, because we do have a lot of students that travel during the summer back home instead of their homeland. We don't want students that are traveling not to be part of this program. So, we will do that, some things during the summer, but also some things come fall.
Yeah, our teachers at the elementary school have already started reviewing their pacing guides for next year to adjust and to give more time in the, in September and October for kids to adjust to school, just academically, but also, you know, social-emotional adjustments as well. And then, the middle school and high school will be working on that in the first few department meetings of their school year. So, all of that is being worked on and taken into consideration, and we're using our assessment scores to really drive that, that's, that work.
Understood. Anything else on COVID-19 related? Trying to think. From what I understand, Murphy's been going a bit back and forth on the masks for high school.
We are daily, basically, it's at the elementary school, because the high school, middle school, and the school day are pretty early, and there's no recess in those schools. So, we have, we talked to the medical subcommittee, and on hot days, like, a certain temperature, we will not require masks for the students outside. The devil, like, today, certainly. But if you look at the forecast, tomorrow should be the last day of the heat wave, and then it really breaks. And we're talking about 60 degrees on Friday and high 70s, low 80s next week. So, we anticipate the problem with the masks being a short-term problem. And then, we will look at it daily and decide whether or not the weather determines whether or not we have masks on.
Hopefully, the state gives an answer by, you know, due timing.
But by September, we'll be, I believe, certainly outside mask-free, outside.
Well, we shall wait, I guess, till we get the answers. It was interesting. I don't know if anyone else saw it any differently, but the way that that notice was sent out was through Twitter. That's how I think most people got that.
That's how we took it.
And the county superintendent said, please wait for further guidance, so it wasn't very clear for school districts. I just want to put that out.
Yeah, it was, yeah, the county told us to wait, and we didn't get much from this. It's been difficult, but we are allowed to moderate mask use, especially outside. And today, with the kids, we reduced recess time, because it was so hot, even with or without masks on today, that recess time was reduced a little, so make sure the kids are safe and the staff is safe, but they did not wear masks today. But at the graduation ceremonies, because they're close together, they did wear masks. Those ceremonies were short.
Any board members, anything on COVID-related? Otherwise, we'll move to the typical. Yeah, Dom?
I just have a quick question. So, it's, it's great to hear about there's a pacing guidelines and extra supports being planned. And then, I'm wondering, is there also, are we considering some sort of evaluation protocols to, like, better identify where the true gaps are, like emotionally or economically? Or are we just planning to kind of slowly start the whole process and just leave it up to each teachers to kind of identify where the gaps are?
Domi, Zanti's worked on a program for September, so.
Sure. So, so, just, you know, in case, in case the public or in the board doesn't know, we are taking NJ State assessments in September and October of next year. So, the state, you know, waived them for this year, but they're requiring them September, October. So, we, those are the assessments we will be taking in addition to our regular, you know, our running records, our, you know, our benchmark assessments, our, you know, our pre-assessments, all the other types of assessments we would normally do. Students will be taking Start Strong assessments. So, academically, we do not want to add more assessments.
Yeah, that sounds perfect.
So, luckily, we are taking Start Strong, which our district is one of the few districts, especially in Bergen County, that already did Start Strong last year. So, our kids kind of have a leg up on what to expect, and so does our staff and our administrators that administer the exam. So, yeah, so, and then, socially-emotionally, we are, one of the things that is going to be, that was written in our Esser II grant for mental health was to partner with, Montclair offers a PD with a staff developer, almost the same way we do TC, where they come in and work in small groups with our teachers. And the piece that they're going to be looking at is social-emotional development and mental health. And our, our staff developer, one of the first things he's going to do with the teachers is teach them how to do listening circles at different grade levels to really be able to identify, you know, kids that need more supports, and you know, what kind of struggles kids are having based on this activity of a listening circle.
That's awesome. Yeah. Does it apply to all the staff members or the select key positions, or how do we?
So, we're still waiting for, to confirm with the grant. I can't really make that determination until I know how much money we are able to use on it. So, yeah, so as soon as we know, as soon as we have a finalized and approved grant, and then also, once we have the allocations for ESSA, our normal allocations, I'll know specifically how much we can offer. And then, you know, who we can, we've talked about, like, grade levels, like, doing like a grade level lead at each one, and then giving time for that grade level to turnkey. We also talked about, like, chunking things. So, lots of conversations around how to maximize what we have.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm sure there'll be plenty of stuff to come. So, thank you in advance for all that to come. I did just want to mention something I forgot to say during board comment. I think I'm board president. I think I get a little leeway on when I get to say it. I wanted to thank Dr. Bertolini for working there and helping set it up. The LHS hosted a COVID-19 vaccine, what do you call it, vaccination clinic? For, in partnership with Holy Name Hospital, and it was the East Bergen County Schools, School Districts, right? Yeah. There were 75 people that were vaccinated at the clinic. So, I'm glad that the high school could be a location, a site for people to get vaccinated. And thank you for being there, registering people, and I'm glad we could do that. All right, now, we'll move on to the typical standing committee reports, and we'll start off with education. Norine?
Yes, thank you. So, we met briefly right before this meeting, and going back to kind of, I guess, what we were saying earlier about waiting on the state. One of the main things we talked about was fall planning, right? So, we know right now that the governor has said by executive order, there will be no remote instruction option in the fall, and we'll all be back in person. And I think we all want to be back in person. But in our last office hours, actually, some of our community members, I think Rebecca, who's on the call, and Roland also helped us think about some of these things. There are some practical realities that we have to plan for. So, one thing that came up was, for example, what do we do if a student or two or more test positive for COVID, and we have to quarantine individuals, right? And they have to stay home for a number of days. So, that's, that's one thing, right? What if, you know, we know prior to, prior to COVID, right, a lot of times in the winter, tons of kids have headache or cough or runny nose or sometimes even fever, right? And sometimes, kids would be more likely to come to school, but now, I think, people will be more cautious in keeping their children home, and we might see a rise in absences, right? Because we certainly don't want kids coming into the lengthy symptoms, right? What about the kids who check off that they have those symptoms on the daily, daily form that currently has to be filled out? So, I guess, when we think about this, there's a good chance that we might have, at any given time, a pretty substantial number of kids at home. So, what do we do about them if there's no remote instruction, right? And prior to this, again, right, we would have said, students who can't come to school in person would get home instruction, but that's not really a scalable type thing for the number of kids that may be out, right? That requires a teacher to go to the house every day. It's very expensive. It's not something that's gonna work if we have to quarantine, like, say, two classrooms in two separate buildings that involve a lot of students. So, that was a lot of, a lot of our discussion. We know these realities are going to exist. Right now, we can't do remote, right? But we're thinking the state, we're kind of waiting on the state, I guess, because at some point, every, every school district's gonna have to deal with this and figure out what's, how do we, how do we handle this to make sure everybody's still getting an education if they, for some reason, have to, have to be out of the building? So, that was most of our discussion. And then, the second thing we just sort of talked about was, now that, you know, now that we are all, even though we're going back to in-person, there certainly are some silver linings to be able to have Zoom conferencing available for other things, meetings, et cetera. So, we're gonna look at how we might, you know, incorporate that next year as, to leverage some of the benefits of being able to use, use the Zoom in certain situations. Did I forget anything? I'm just gonna, Domi or Kim? All right?
All right, great.
Update. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, move on to finance and planning. We had a meeting. It was on June 1st, yeah, June 1st. And we actually had a presentation from a company that, I think, we kind of came to the conclusion that we wouldn't be able to use their services, and it was interesting. So, I'll, I'm gonna share my screen. Let's see, here we go. You should all be able to see this. So, this is actually available. I put it on our website. It shows something pretty interesting. The Leonian School District is a lot more energy-efficient than the national average school district, except at the middle school. And we believe that the reason why is that all of the servers for the, for the school district are located in the middle school, and they use a significant amount of energy. But those are gonna be moving, so we, if we track this again, we may see the energy cost at the middle school fall. But basically, one of the things that we discussed was funding mechanisms for these types of projects. For these types of projects. Uh, unfortunately, because the school district already did, uh, I guess the biggest ticket item. In terms of energy savings and that is um, uh, LED lighting, uh, which we've obviously seen the benefit of. I think uh, when they were presenting and they looked back at the numbers and Rashawn, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but like the cost for square foot beforehand was like one eighty. Oh, sorry, one fifty something. Um, and now uh, it's it's fallen quite substantially. Um, and they said that the LED lights are the ones that pay back the quickest. I think they said like three to four years or something they they pay back in. Um, and I have to look at a deeper dive into the numbers on the LED lighting project. That was a bit before my time. But in any event, uh, because we, the school district's already done that, we can't uh, take advantage of certain funding mechanisms to do uh, additional projects. That that was, I guess, the um, the big takeaway from 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 that meeting. Um, but we're still moving forward with uh, our uh, receiving proposals on our. Long range facility plan, our architect and engineers record. Um, I believe, I believe that's, that's really, um. That was really, did I miss anything from from any of the committee members? I think I covered that. Um, I always think I'm missing something. But I see Dan shaking his head. I know he takes good notes, so I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust you. Uh, next we'll move on to uh, community relations and communication. Mary.
Okay, thanks Bryce. Um, we just had our second office hours pilot and I, we had a really wonderful group of people. Who shared their thoughts and suggestions and even criticisms, which we always welcome to. We love praise, but we do take criticisms too. And we really think about them and what we can do with those ideas and suggestions. So I thank everybody who attended tonight's meeting. There's still one more. Before the next meeting on June twenty-second. So if you haven't already attended one and you'd like to, even if it's just to listen in. Come on and uh, you know, get that Zoom link and join us next time. Um, at our committee meeting, which we just had on Monday evening, we talked about um, the office hours. And you know, what we will do for the future, but it's a little too early to to tell right now. Let's have our third one and then we'll have a discussion. And while we talked a little bit about public relations, I did attend a webinar recently. Uh, it's a three hour webinar. It was really very good. I shared my summary of the, of the webinar with the board members too, because there's a lot of useful information with about it. Uh, we talked about the district website, the Board of Ed website, different kinds of improvements that we could make. Um, you know, it it just needs like, you know, annual tinkering and sometimes it needs monthly tinkering. You know, there's like things that we discover, little, little. I don't know, graphics or or words that needed to be fixed. So if anybody spots something on our website and you think it needs to be fixed or changed. Or you have a suggestion, could you let us know, please? Because it's a big website. We're trying to make it really comprehensive and easy to use. So feedback is appreciated. Um, and we did talk about board meetings for the fall or even possibly even before that, going back to in person. Or having some kind of a hybrid capability so that we can continue to have people come um, either doing it through Zoom or calling in. We, I think we'll be able to do that. We just need to work on our audio video equipment to make sure that our connections are good. So we want to give like the best possible meeting that we can, if we're going to make it available virtually too. And I think that was it.
Thank you very much, Mary. Um, and yeah, I, I'd like us to get back to some type of in, all of us to be in person. If not by the next meeting, that might be a bit ambitious, but definitely by August, we should be. But as Mary said, the, the main challenge is just. We figure out kind of how we want to do it, probably continue to include Zoom to some degree for people who want to listen in, but question is how? The IT behind it. So give us some time and we'll, we will uh, hopefully have a good professional looking uh, recording meeting. Um, all right, uh, a policy, Isaac.
Yes, good. Okay. Um, the uh, we didn't meet on the uh, this week, but I'm on the, we didn't meet several weeks ago. And as you see that um, the district says, and uh, there's about like a two hundred pages of the policy we've been passed on. And I, I really appreciate that, like all the, like our um, the policy committee members. That uh, they reviewed all these like a long lengthy document and then uh, we could discuss something. There's a bit, uh, I really appreciate our committee members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um. Yeah. Next, we'll, um, student representatives, do you guys have anything, any updates again? It's on the agenda now, so I've come to. All right, um, we already congratulated you, Chris. I'm sorry, I didn't even, no, I put that there. Um, and next we'll move on to uh, the resolution to support and respect the United States military. Uh, is there a motion? Motion, Maria, is there a second? I see Isaac or Mary or both, whoever. Discussion. Uh, I did want to say that the, you know, one of the reasons I wrote this document or this resolution was. You know, I I understand that Memorial Day in in our town had some challenges. Unfortunately, the American Legion wasn't able to plan it this year. But of course, we thank them for a wonderful ceremony that they held in Wood Park. Um, I don't know, I was just thinking about how. Like my, my grandfathers were both veterans, one uh, during the, during the Korean War as a Marine and one during World War Two. And he was eighteen when he was sent over to Europe and like I'm twenty-two. I can't like imagine what that was like. So I feel, I I always felt a very strong importance that wherever we can to acknowledge those who have served. It's, it, to me, it's like almost unimaginable bravery that it must have taken and it takes people to put on that uniform. Um, so for the board to to support that and to have moments of silence, uh, you know, formally said that we're going to have moments of silence on. On nine eleven, on December seventh, um, and and more Memorial Day or the closest school day to Memorial Day, I think is very important. And the last uh, be resolved is to have veterans come in and speak to our different schools. You know, when I was a student, the veterans came into the high school and spoke. It's very important, I believe. But I think it's also important that they speak to younger students as well. Um, you know, I I think there's a. Oftentimes, a lot of questions that little kids have and uh, you know, hearing it from the mouth of someone who's seen it and and been there. It, they might provide them a different um, lens to view it through as they grow up. I know it did for me when I, when I was little. And spoke to my grandparents about, about their experiences. So hopefully, uh, you know, as that generation unfortunately passes on. Uh, there's still a few people who can come in and and share those memories uh, with our students and 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 more. So uh, yeah. Uh, Mary, you had a comment.
Yes, on on my copy of the resolution, and I'm not sure if it's on yours, there should have been, you didn't amend the wording.
Yeah, it should have been amended. It should have been.
I don't know, maybe my, I have an older one I'm looking at.
Yeah, I, it's not on this one either, actually. Service women. I, I wasn't sure the proper wording, whether it's servicemen and women or servicemen and service women. Um, but the correct one should be, it should say servicemen and service women. Um, so.
You can just say service members.
Service members. Or that that actually probably sounds better. Uh, service members. So if we can move it, I get, or if if there's no objection uh, to voting on it as service members. I don't see, I don't, there's no objection, okay? Uh, so we'll just be voting on it as service members. Thank, thank you, uh, Maria for that good suggestion. I was looking up for a while. I I wanted to be just very proper about it. Um, but okay. Uh, is there any, any other um, uh, comments? Statements? If not, not a problem. Uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Mrs. De Jesus?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Rackow?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilds?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Absolutely.
Eyes have emotions been approved.
Thank you very much, everyone. And uh, yeah. All right, we will move on to the next item. And that is under finance. And that is the donation of the forty-three thousand, I can't even believe I'm saying that. Except the donation of forty-three thousand, three point three ounce hand sanitizers from Sun Young Ahn. And uh, give a chance, uh, give a chance, give chances, excuse me, give chances, um, foundation. Is there a motion on that? And then we can have discussion. Uh, Dan, is there a second? Isaac, want to second it? Isaac, I figured you'd want to second it. Um, discussion. Uh, Isaac, yes.
Yes, uh, do um, the uh, Sun Young and the give chances donated this uh, much of the uh, um, the sanitizers. Uh, there's a lot of people that help out um, to moving um, the these um, the, you know, boxes. These are actually like about twenty pounds, about three hundred boxes. And that that day was a hot day and there's a. A lot of the AC's, AC's parents was on the, at the um, the warehouse and moving these boxes to the our um, the. Um, the our Leonia school box. So those are like, um, the, also the, that they uh, Leonia school bus drivers. Uh, to um, allow like moving those three hundred, carrying thirty boxes from the uh, warehouse to the uh, you know, the um. In the Leonia Street School District and they're making uh, the possible arrangement uh, to the uh, the Edward Berlini and as well as the Kevinos. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes. Oh, you're right. Okay, we'll have to go and fix that. All right, um, any other comments other than uh, Isaac, I just want to echo. Thank you to the entire organization, to your wife and to you, to everybody as part of it. Um, it's really wonderful. If no other comment, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Mrs. De Jesus?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee? Yes. I think that was a yes.
Yes.
Got it. Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Rackow?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilds?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes, of course.
Eyes have it, motion's been approved.
Thank you. Um, there was an item that it seems I missed. I apologize under education. Uh. Zero six, zero eight, uh, dash eleven, D dash twenty-one, um, regarding the smile program. Um, so if, is, is, it's on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve this? I I didn't put an asterisk next to it either. It might have been a late entry to the agenda. So I apologize if I missed it. Um, is is there a motion? Uh, Kim, is there a second? Second, Isaac? Any discussion?
Just that the, all the, all the funds to pay for this comes out of the, the enterprise account, so it's self sufficient.
Understood. That that's a wonderful thing about the smile program. Um, any, any other uh, comments, questions? All right, if not, uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Mrs. De Jesus? Yes, all right. Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Melman?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Rackow?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilds?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
All right, motion's been approved.
And then I also noticed that when I said the finance items, I didn't say that we're moving all the finance items as, as listed. So I, I somewhat gave the impression that we were only voting on twelve A, so I'd like us also to vote on twelve B, just so that it's very clear that it was voted on. Um, is there a motion on twelve B?
Motion.
Motion. Mary, is there a second? Noreen? Um, any discussion? This, this, sorry, this one should have been on the uh, on the with asterisks. That's okay. Uh, roll call, please.
One second, sir. Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Mrs. De Jesus? Yes?
Yes, yes.
All right, got you. Uh, Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Rackow?
I am so sorry, I'm not seeing it on my agenda. Could you just tell me the topic?
It is, uh, it's the bills list.
Oh, I don't know why it's here. Yes.
All right, um, Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilds?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Eyes have emotions been approved.
Okay, great. Now we'll move on to uh, new business items. Or do you have new business items in your agenda? It should be in the Google Drive.
If not, you have the backup. The backup is there for the resumes for the uh, six new staff members.
Okay.
Um, I I should read it. I should read this, Rashawn. I don't think it, I have to. Oh, you have, I have a copy too.
Where, could you tell me where that information is? Because I don't have it either, where I am. I don't have anything on the new business.
I'll read the numbers off like we used to do in the business, the old fashioned way, because I think uh, it wasn't placed on the agenda, but it's in the backup. But I'll read it. I'll read the entire thing, Rashawn. I'll send it. I did send an email a moment ago that has it. If you look at the email that I just sent to everyone, but I'll read it to make sure that the public has full knowledge of what the new business is. These are new hires that I was talking about, that the backup was put into the Board of Ed packet, but I don't think it got to the agenda. Uh, okay, so uh, zero six, zero eight, fourteen, A dash twenty-one. Move to approve the appointment of Christine Panapinto's maternity leave for Julie Severs at Leonia High School. For the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year maternity leave replacement corresponding to an annual salary of sixty-three thousand. Seven hundred and twenty-five dollars uh, from nine, September first to January fourteenth. And financially, that's an even switch. Zero six, zero eight, fourteen, B dash twenty-one. Move to approve the appointment of Lawrence Kander as the world language ELL supervisor, K to twelve. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year at an annual salary of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which is an increase of four thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Uh, pending the uh, uh, approval of Evelina Despanya as the new supervisor at the New Brunswick School District. Uh, board meeting upcoming. Zero six, zero eight, fourteen, C. Move to approve the appointment of Jonah Bagligadas as the English teacher at LMS. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year contingent on the resignation of Grace Chun on step BA two. Corresponding to an annual salary of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, Grace Chun is accepting and I. Um, supervising position in Cresco High School, so we wish her the best of luck as she becomes a supervisor. And that's a savings of fourteen thousand, twenty-five dollars. Zero six, zero eight, fourteen, D twenty-one, upon the recommendation of me. Move to approve the appointment of Ariel Berger as a maternity leave replacement from Melissa Rinaldi for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. On step BA one, corresponding to an annual salary of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is another savings of six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And then fourteen E, upon the recommendation, move to approve an unpaid NJ F L A for Maria Varlakis. For maternity leave uh, on June eighteenth. She expects to return for September of twenty-two. And then the last one, zero six, zero eight, fourteen, F dash twenty-one, move to approve the appointment of Jolie Ren. As schoolmate nurse at ACS for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year on step BA dash twenty-four. Corresponding to an annual salary of eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is a savings of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Again, that's the new business that we've worked on over the weekend. The resumes that you've seen are in your packets already.
That's it. Okay. There was, there was, no, there was no motion. Okay. Uh, is there a motion on new business items? Uh, Anna, is there a second? Mary, is there any discussion on new business items? Uh, Mary, yeah.
Uh, Grace Chun, uh, in the middle school, my son had her and she was a fantastic teacher. She is a fantastic teacher. So I really want to wish her the best in her new position. I'm sad to see her leaving, though. I think she is just so great. And foster love of writing and reading in my son, so thank you.
And we obviously uh, support when teachers get a advancement as a supervisor. We do miss, we are going to certainly miss Grace. But we certainly want to wish her the best of luck in her new role.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, any other um, comments on, on new business items? Okay, seeing none, uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Mrs. De Jesus? I think that was, I think I read a lip that say yes.
Yes, I don't know what's going on with Mike. Yeah, yes.
Okay. Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Rackow?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilds?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Eyes have emotions been approved.
Okay, we will now move to the second public comment, questions, concerns or praise on agenda item, uh, non-agenda items, excuse me. Um, agenda items or non-agenda items, whatever you like, uh, two minutes and thirty seconds. Uh, pertaining to Leonia and Edwarder School District, if you wish to uh, or actually I should ask, say. Is there a motion to take us into public comment? I should slow down a second. Is there a motion to take us into, Isaac, is there a second? Christina, all in favor? Any opposing, any extensions? Okay, good. So now, if you'd like to use the raise your hand function, you may for the second public comment portion of the meeting. Which can be agenda items or not. So now, if you'd like to use the raise your hand function, you may for the second public comment portion of the meeting, which can be agenda items or not. Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to take us back to the regular portion of the meeting? Maria and then Isaac, all in favor? Any opposing extensions? Okay. We are now back to the regular portion of the meeting. Is there a second board comments? Any board comments from anyone? Mary, yeah.
Okay, I wanted to thank Rashawn and Ed and Kim. We had a Zoom meeting, I think it was last week. We talked about summer lunches for, for needy families and students in our, in our school district. We had a really good talk about different data that we needed to research. We didn't think it was, it was like, we didn't think that there was a, a need for it and I wish that we could have really been much more. You know, we could have had that backed up a little bit more by data, but for, for the future, we have taken a lot of notes. We have a lot of questions to ask. There was a lot of research that we can do. If we do find a need for it in the future, whether it's the summer or during the school year, you know, we are going to be much more aware of it. And I want to thank Kim for really driving that question too and, and making us do the research and being aware of these things. And I want to encourage a lot of families out there that if you do need assistance, please ask, because we want to help. You know, we don't want to see kids go hungry. We want, we want to help families. So just say something, even if it's just an email. It's okay.
Absolutely. For sure. And thank you, Kim, and thank you, Mary, and thank you, Rashawn, and thank you for, for doing all that. Other board comments, if there's any. Otherwise, we have a lot to discuss in closed session. So with that being said, is there a motion to take us into closed session? Someone, Dan, is there a second? Maria, all in favor? Any opposing extensions? Okay. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Leonia Board of Education shall conduct a closed executive session pursuant to the exceptions prescribed in NJSA ten, colon, four, dash, twelve, for the purposes of discussing personnel matters, contracts, negotiations and matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm going to say it's anticipated that the length of time this executive session will be approximately, I would say an hour and a half, I would assume. And that actions may or may not be taken in public after the executive session. The minutes of the executive session will be released when the need for confidentiality no longer applies. So to all, thank you for coming. Okay, and we're back into the regular portion of the meeting for the second half of the meeting. Is there? Is there an, it took two, is there a motion on personnel items? Isaac, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Noreen? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Mrs. De Jesus?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Racco?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilds?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
The eyes have, emotion's been approved.
Okay, and is there a? Is that me? That was, oh, you. Scared, scared to hell out of me. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn on that note? Someone. Isaac, second, all in favor? I, any opposing extensions? All right, the record can reflect that the meeting of the Leonia Board of Education ended at ten oh four PM. Thank you, everybody, and see you soon.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.